Meeting is live.
Okay, the only thing is it's listed in the address that they will be read during the meeting. So he needs to change that benefit, that's not gonna happen.
Okay.
Okay, we're, we're live.
Okay, thank you. We just have one more minute, technically.
Legally not allowed to go before scheduled time, right?
It's illegal.
Yeah.
Okay. All the meetings are ordered, all rise with the Plenar Legion. Plenar Legion. Do we have any public comments this evening besides the comments that the board has already received?
I think it's just the ones that the board has received and just for the people who are on the, uh, uh, doing that tonight, good evening and thank you. Um, the individuals, I'll just mention the people, uh, very quickly. Uh, we received, um, community correspondence from Luke O'Brien, Amy DeFalco, Mike Wolf, Reed Loffer, uh, John Kucetic, and Laurie Alexic, all of which are asking about where does the district board stand with regards to having fans in the stands in its sporting events. So, um, uh, I, I do know that there is a, uh, athletic committee meeting on Thursday. Um, I know Mr. Elphinstone will be talking to you, I know he met with the athletic directors and that today from our conference. And, um, just to make sure all are aware, um, we're expecting potentially some legislation coming out of Harrisburg Wednesday, tomorrow or Thursday on this. So, but, um, Mr. Elphinstone wants to talk about this at the committee meeting on Thursday. Uh, and so don't want to do any more specifics with it because I may say something today that totally changes because there's new legislation and they opened up for us to be able to do things on Thursday. That's, we're hearing that, so we'll see. And then the other email, uh, was from the Hennies family, and I will read that one real quick. Uh, hello, I am just writing to you and the school board today to say thank you. I know there is still a long road to go to get back to the way things used to be, yet I cannot express enough appreciation that I feel that the kids were given the offered option and able to attend school in person today. Thanks for all of your work towards this. Uh, these are not easy times for Hennies family. So basically, that's all we have.
Uh, some, some people came in. Do you have a public comment?
No, we'll wait for the next day since it sounds like it's not an athletic.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll have the board meeting minutes for next month, um, well, for last month, for next week. Uh, we also have Dr. Strohke's superintendent schools that he has set for himself uh, for the twenty, the 2021 school year, and this is part of his annual review process. Uh, we have an MOU with the Keystone Education Association. And I'll wait till next week, although I'm not sure if I have anything new for Parkway. Um, Mr. Raza?
I don't have any report, uh, this time for Shasta, uh, so we're not going to forward now. Thank you.
And PSBA, um, they took a little bit of a hiatus too with the holidays, so we didn't have the last couple of calls, so, um, maybe next week I'll have more, I'll have something.
Any news from the boroughs?
Um, Castle Shannon lost a good man last week, uh, Mike Choverentchuk, he was a, uh, longtime councilman and mayor of Castle Shannon, he passed away at ninety-nine. He was a very, very, very good, uh, good guy to the community. He, uh, he started the South Hills, uh, uh, medical rescue, the ambulance in the South Hills before they were road around station wagons, Hollywood Way. So, uh, he was like the first, he did a lot of things good for Castle Shannon, so I just wanted to give a shout out to him and his family.
And we did not need an executive session this evening. Uh, Dr. Strohke?
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Item number one will just be appointing next week Mr. Kubiak as our, uh, school safety and security coordinator. And then items two through, I believe, twenty-four are all revised policies, updates, and so on and so forth there. And, uh, if anybody wants to, it's just for first reading, so if anybody wants to have any feedback to Ms., uh, you know, to give to us, you know, let Ms. Shaw or I know.
Even busy.
Uh, but next week is just the first reading.
Oh, we also have second reading for.
Oh, there were some second reads, that's right. I apologize. There were some second reads because we squeezed them in an office, so there's a few. So I do apologize for that, but that's all, Ms. Shaw.
Okay. I was just gonna say, uh, for item, for item one in particular, that's consistent with the policy that we passed just, uh, a month or so ago, Mr. Kubiak was, was the point of contact person in that policy. So that's just consistent with the policy we passed. Ms. Lydon?
Um, education, we only have one item, and it's the adoption of, uh, the language textbooks for French and Spanish, AP.
Under people personnel for next week, there's just one item, and it's our agreement with the Allegheny Intermedia Union who rents the space over at Dormont Elementary for the Head Start Department, so that'll be on for, uh, next week.
Uh, personnel report, Mr. Cesario?
Let's see, we have, uh, one retirement for next week, uh, as well as two resignations. We've got, um, professional employee appointments, five of them. Special education, ELA nurse, two more special education, as well as two long-term substitutes. We then have, uh, one department liaison, Mr. Warner for seventh grade. And with, um, the ongoing fall sports, we have approval of all of the athletic positions and stipends associated with those, as well as some other support positions. Finally, we've got four leaves of absence.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cesario.
Welcome.
Ms. Warrensey?
Um, we just have one item listed as the accounts payable approval list, um, through August thirty-first. And I don't assume that that's gonna change much between this week and next week.
Mr. Kubiak, I'm not seeing the, the numbers.
Yeah, they will be updated because of the holidays.
Okay. I know we had, do we have any idea on how we're looking compared this year compared to last year in terms of property taxes?
So, um, we have been coming in slower than last year, um, so for the month of August, um, we were a little over a million dollars behind collections compared to this time last year. Um, that's consistent, we're also behind in our income tax, um, as well, um, it's not nearly as much, but it's still, uh, slower. That's about, um, a hundred and fifty thousand, um, lower than prior years. So, um, as we expected, uh, with COVID hitting, we are seeing a slight decline in collections right now.
And what about, I think I read something about, um, what about any increase in charter school enrollment? That was not budgeted.
Um, we did have an increase of students, um, going out to charter schools, um, that was not budgeted for. Um, and that cost is probably roughly around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that we weren't expecting for this year.
Thank you.
Were they, were they enrolled, did they become enrolled in the springtime, or did they just enroll throughout the summer?
It just happened, uh, toward the end of summer, actually, I just hit up and, um, they weren't, you know, um, enrolled during springtime for us to know, um, it was mainly during summer, really, the last couple of weeks when enrollment was like that.
I went through the check register that you sent too, and there were a lot of payments to charter schools in there. I didn't know, I mean, it didn't seem to be at the time any more than it was last year, but I didn't sit there and add everything up either.
Right. Yeah, so we won't be seeing a lot of, um, a lot of the payments you saw on the check register report for, uh, prior year end of reconciliation, um, usually at the time they do their end of year reconciliation. So really, I'm looking forward to see that next phase come up.
Hopefully, we can get into some more, how we get into some more specifics at our finance meeting on Thursday. You know, I have a list of minor items that I, that I won't go into here because I haven't even put my thoughts down yet. Uh, Ms. Lindsay?
Um, at this point, there's gonna be one action item, um, the change to the Athletic Health and Safety Plan, although that could possibly change again, it probably will change next week. Um, I, we do have an athletics, um, finance and building grounds and transportation meeting on Thursday. Um, I think we're gonna do finance at five.
Yes, I guess you have on the schedule.
Um, but I, I just wanted to kind of get a feel for, um, the rest of the board and what their thoughts are on the recent guideline change from the state regarding spectators.
Can I ask quickly about the item on the agenda?
Yes, sure.
So I just don't wanna get off topic again, um, before. Is there any kind of increase in, significant increase in trans, I mean, obviously, we have to follow these guidelines, but is there any hit to the budget in terms of athletic transportation?
Uh, I think right now, Mr. Elphinstone has been able to keep it consistent with last year, so there hasn't been an increase in the number of buses.
So it's within, we're still within the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
There's also a lot of people not going to away games either, and I think that's how we're keeping those budgets, that's a little bit smaller. Does anybody else have any questions about this item? Um, and obviously, there's a significant amount of, of more parents out there that didn't write and, and didn't choose to show up tonight, um, just regarding that. But as the season begins and then as the season progresses, there's a lot of people that are very concerned about being able to see their children play. Um, right now, we're more concerned, I think, about the parents of the children than the performers that are there. Um, but I, we've talked about so many different things as far as the athletic plan goes, um, and I didn't know what other people are hearing from community members.
Did we come up with a number or did Mark spend them on numbers?
I requested that from Mark. I believe he's gonna bring it on Thursday. Um, I wish we, we could have had that for this evening, though.
Well, that's gonna change, so I'll just say this, for right now, it's two fifty. Right now in Pennsylvania, you're only allowed to have two hundred and fifty in the facility.
Well, the question is, how many are already on the field? Like, what's his ballpark number of?
See, I hate to give those numbers out only because all of this, I think, very well could change on Thursday. So I don't want people to, it might be a little bit premature, but, um.
But the numbers, he should be able to have the numbers.
Oh, I have them. I actually have the numbers right now, but if I share them, it, this could all change on Thursday. This could all change on Thursday.
Well, and that's, that's fine. I would like to hear what the numbers are.
Yeah, so the, so the numbers are this. When it comes down to two hundred and fifty total in, in, in the facility, that comes down to a decision the board's gonna have to make, whether or not the band and cheerleaders could be present. If the band and cheerleaders were present, then the fans would only total six. Six fans, that's it. That would top off your two fifty.
Well, Bill, one of the things.
If you don't have the band and cheerleaders, then we could probably bring in about ninety fans, which would probably be the parents, you know, of, of the players, but that's not my decision. That would be, the, the board would have to make that decision. Uh, that, that's not mine. Um, so that's as we talk now. But there is legislation that is supposed to get, uh, supposed to make it out and pass the senate in the state on Thursday. So if that's true, that number, and I don't want to give that because that's, that's numbers rumor, but it, I will say this, it's higher than the two fifty, which, which, which would, which then you would have, then you could obviously have more fans.
Not accounting for any of this going on, what is our normal capacity for the stadium?
Normal capacity of the stadium is twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Twenty-five hundred is normal capacity for the stadium.
I, excuse me for one second. I almost see this stadium as being almost like two venues. It, it confuses me that you can have, you know, people on completely opposite sides of, of the facility. Why can't you have, you know, a certain number on one side and a certain number on the other? Um, I, I don't get that. And I don't think that the facility's size has ever been very well addressed. I mean, you could have a way.
Yeah, but I think that's what we're gonna hear more of, but, but before Thursday. I, I have a feeling that that's what they're looking at.
The number that I'm giving you now, Ms. Croll, is strictly by the state and, and following the governor's guideline. And had, had the WPIAL and the Allegheny County Health Department not struck an agreement for that on August the twenty-first, which is the last letter that we have, please keep in mind that as we're speaking right now, the total number of people you're allowed at an outside event in Allegheny County is one hundred. But that was agreed upon to two fifty. But I can tell you what I'm hearing about Thursday, it's gonna be higher than two fifty, considerably higher than two fifty.
Okay, but if it isn't, the, the point, when I asked Mark for that information, is to get exactly who is essential, talking about not the number of kids in the band, not the number of kids that were cheerleaders, but the people that are on the field. Because there's a lot of people that are on the field, on the sidelines, who are not essential. That things could be done by maybe the players.
Well, I, I think that'll be something you'll need to talk about on Thursday because he's not here. But I do have the number, and non-essential, I don't know, but if you take out the band and the cheer, cheerleaders, that's, that's ninety. That's ninety. So if you take those off, okay, then, then you have it.
Well, no, I don't think anybody here wants to do that. That's not something that.
No, could you do A and B squad? I mean, I, I'm not a cheerleader or a band person, but.
You know what, I can't answer that. That's gonna be something Mark's asking.
But that's, but that's, see, that's what we're supposed to talk about here, and that's what we're doing.
Well, Thursday, though, more at the committee, I would say.
But not everybody is gonna be at the committee that's here. So the people that are here, almost everybody's here. Are we missing anybody? I don't think we, we're missing Stephanie, right?
I don't know, I think we'll just all, we'll have to work and to make it fair and if, you know, fair means, you know, at some point, we do, we have to do like a lottery type thing where we do random, random number generators to give everyone a chance to see their child at least once. Um, possibly some kind of weight given to the year of schooling their child is in. But, you know, I think we'll have to look at what's fair and, um, you know, yes, the football players are playing, but at the same time, the cheerleaders are playing too because that is their key performance. Of course, they won't be performing for anybody. The band too, that's also their key performance, so we can't forget. They're all, they're all playing, they're all performing.
Yeah, but there's nothing, there's nothing said that the band couldn't do the pre-game performance, and all of the parents could see their pre-game performance.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, we have to evacuate the stadium, basically.
With the number that I'm hearing from Harrisburg and where they're gonna come out, I'll just say this, and I'm hopeful that this won't be much of an issue. That's why I said, I think you, you possibly could be fretting right now over something that may not be an issue on Thursday. And please keep in mind, our first home game, football, is not till the twenty-fifth.
But we do have a home JV game on Saturday.
Yeah, but I don't think you'll tip, you'll come any close to two fifty.
But are people allowed to go to that game? That's the thing we have to decide as a board.
Is there a band and, um?
No.
No.
Cheerleaders?
No.
No.
And you don't have to vote on that. That is not a voting night. I talked to Mike Brown, that's not a voting, you can just decide, that's what you're going to do. You can decide that on Thursday.
And there's soccer games this week, am I right?
Soccer's not a problem. Mr. Elphinstone and I already talked, soccer, because you're allowed to have fans, you are allowed to have fans, you're allowed to have fans. Let's make that clear. You are allowed to have fans. You just cannot have a facility, an outside facility, more than two hundred and fifty people within the outside facility. Um, who cares if there's two sides, six sides, twenty sides, six fields, nine, it doesn't matter. Two fifty right now is your magic number by the government. Has nothing to do with you, me, anybody else. It's two fifty. Soccer, not a problem. First, first home soccer game, you could open that puppy up and you're, you're ready to go. Because we don't get nowhere close to two fifty. Be nice if we did, be nice if we did. Soccer's not gonna be an issue, so that, you're allowed to have them, that's not a problem.
So Mark will put that out to soccer and let them know, because I don't know that all parents know.
But he, but he also needs to talk to the committee, Mark knows. So Mark is gonna talk all of this out on Thursday, and I think most of you are gonna be there anyhow because between the three committees, I think every person in this, on the board, between those three committees, and that's the reason they were all together, I'm gonna highly encourage all the board members to be there if you can or zoom in or whatever for the meeting. You should all be able to be there.
I'll be hybrid.
I just think, you know, it has to be fair and, you know, some people throw it out, oh, only senior parents should be able to go. Well, you know, that might not be fair, just, you know, we might have to do some kind of lottery system. I'm hoping that it won't come to that, but, you know, I want it to be fair.
Hey, Bill?
It's just football. The other sports are not an issue.
Hey, Bill?
Uh, Mr. Brubaker?
Yes, Mr. Brubaker?
Yeah, I'm, I just wanted to let you know, I'm here, I've been, I've been here for the last five minutes listening, so, um, the other thing that I heard, and I don't know if you mentioned this, that the, uh, legislation that they're talking about Thursday may be based on, um, a, a percentage of the, uh, of the capacity of whatever the stadium is. Did you hear about that?
That's correct. Yes, that, that's the rumor that's out there, but I, I do not want to go on record saying it because once again, it's in the, it's in the legislators' hands. Local boards right now, you don't have any control of that until they make a decision. Yeah, and, yes, that is correct. I heard it's going to be a percentage of the total capacity. So our total capacity, because I've already looked this, we already figured out, is twenty-five hundred. Okay, so whatever percentage we're allowed, it will be of that. But as I said, both girls and boys soccer is not a problem. You could, first season game, you could, you're fine. Now, we will have to do physical distancing, everybody has to wear masks, you have to follow whatever, but you can beat them. That's not a problem. I don't know when the first game is either, because all the schedules are totally different now too. I don't even know when the first game is, so.
Will there be markings on the benches?
Yeah, we're going over there tomorrow, we're gonna put markings and block off.
Because I mean, even, because I didn't know, we had a game this Saturday, I just, you know. We're making the kids physical distance, but I wanna make sure that our parents are all, parents and fans are physical distance.
That on the sidelines, and we have to put markings on the sidelines. We're not allowed to use the lockers, they have to use the end zones, both teams, not, no use of lockers. Bathrooms are limited, okay? And, uh, the stands will be marked off. There will be stickers and there'll be ropes and stuff, you are limited. And that, that came from the WPIAL, and maybe Mark will, um, go over that on Thursday as well, too. But I know, I'm, when they get to that point tomorrow, they're calling me and I'm going over to see this.
That could be an issue, though, because you could have three people from one family come, or one person by themselves. So, you're not gonna make those three people socially distant.
So the state's gonna come out with a guideline on Thursday with a lot of schools having games on Friday.
Yes.
And people are gonna have to just rush around.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we're lucky because our part of the sun gives up till the twenty-fifth, yeah.
So it seems like we mostly have to wait until Thursday. One thing I, I, one thing I, I will say, though, in reviewing our Athletics Health and Safety Plan, uh, just for the other items that we had on the agenda tonight, I, I did notice that we, uh, in there, we create tiers of essentialness, uh, or whatever you wanna call it. So we kind of list like, okay, the actual, the students that are participating in the event, and the coaches and, and the, the associated folks. And then we actually put media ahead of the spectators. Um, and particularly in a situation, if we were to continue to have to be at two fifty and, and our spots are precious, I would rather prioritize our parents ahead of the media.
And we will, we will. Listen, the first, the first bits will be on parents. They, they, they will get in. We will do what we can under the, the guidelines. As long as the board's okay with that, you have, yeah, we'll, we will do that. And speaking about sports, I can just go on record and say, after this meeting's over, I'd like to have a very quick executive session that deals with a, uh, an actual student personnel matter. So, it'll be very quick.
Any other items?
Annie, I just had one other thing. I, I don't know if tonight's the night, but, um, I'd like to have a discussion at some point, maybe it starts at a committee meeting, about standardizing our procedures for, um, these write-in, um, public comments that, that we're getting. Um, hearing some things from some, some of the folks are feeling like maybe that they're not, um, being represented appropriately or as much as they would have if they had been in, in person. So, um, like to get into that, just, I don't know if you wanna talk about it now, or that's a policy.
Well, our current, our current procedure is, is that the board receives all the public comments prior to the board meeting. They're all printed out in front of us. They're all the email to the other board members, um.
But I think that, that if, if you're.
Those full comments do also appear in the meeting, in the meeting minutes. Uh, so when we approve, so the meeting minutes for last month have all the comments from the previous month, um.
So a couple of things there. One is that if you're a person that's participating live tonight, you're not getting the benefit of the full text. And I know that some of the texts can be long, but that they, they don't get the benefit of that. Um, the second thing is in, in reviewing the meeting minutes, because we're redacting email addresses, if someone didn't sign it, that there's really no indication of, you know, generally, when we have someone come to speak in person, they say name and, I don't know if it's just.
Well, we don't, we don't allow anonymous comments. You have to provide your name for public comment. You cannot provide an anonymous comment. We won't put it in the meeting minutes.
Well, right now, we've got that, because if people haven't signed it and we redacted the email address, then there's no indication of who that person is.
Well, they signed their name, I'm assuming.
No, they haven't, that's the thing. So if you just bang out an email, like if I send you an email and say, hey, Annie, this is my opinion on such and such, don't sign it and send it, all you have is my email address to indicate who I am. If we redact that email address, then there's, then without a signature, it becomes an anonymous comment.
Well, potentially, we need to, uh, create a Google form for this matter, and we'll just make sure. And they will only, only comments that are submitted through the Google form from now on. And we will have a place where you must put your name, uh, what borough you're from, and obviously, then you can place your comment. Um, that's what Castle Shannon is doing, and if that's, this is something we just were trying to accommodate people, like, we've only done this since April, not even? May? We're talking two meetings, two, three meetings worth, but, um, I think in this case, a Google form would be appropriate.
If, if we, we get access to the responses?
Yeah, that would be true.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the most effective and efficient way.
The responses from?
Like, whatever you fill out.
Like, whenever you fill out a form, it goes to a spreadsheet, and then you can have access to that spreadsheet to see what everybody has sent.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have to print them out. We could just check the spreadsheet.
We could, we can determine whatever is, what people would like to receive it as.
Yeah, it is a work in progress.
We may, we may just need to set an earlier cutoff, 5:00 PM on the day of a meeting is cutting it very close. We may need to do it 5:00 PM the day prior to the meeting. Or noon the day of the meeting. That would, that would give, you know, probably Mr. Smith enough time to handle anything and get an email sent out to board members.
We also don't want to discourage people who might not know how to use a, a Google form or something from submitting comments that they want to submit. I, I realize it's a work in progress, and there's reasons why we have to do all of this. But I think people assume that their emails are going to be read.
But we have, we have room, we have room in the boardroom. I mean, we've had, we've had probably 15 open seats.
I know.
Last two meetings.
Yeah.
I mean, people, please, they can come and they can speak.
I wish they would.
No one is, is stopping anyone. I think we need to have a, a more orderly process then, on the Google form. I mean, a lot of things, we have our students fill out Google forms on. So is it really that unfair to ask other residents to fill out a Google form?
If they don't know how to do it, it is. Yeah.
Well, you click on it. Do you want to submit a comment? You click.
I can do it, but I'm not, I'm saying not everybody has the capacity to do that.
Do people call in? Are they allowed to call in and leave comments? Because then we're looking at, you know, an older generation who maybe can't even email. Are we accommodating that as well? I mean, how, how big do you take it?
They all got that option of calling, I assume.
Or coming in person, right? I mean, again, you're saying if you.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think it's a good idea, and I'm, and I'm not being, you know, I'm not saying, you know, this is, everything's a work in progress, right? I mean, we're all figuring this out. But I, I, we'll just, if, I think we're going to be continuing to do this for a while, so it would be good to, to tighten up the process a bit.
Oh, and I, someone just mentioned to me that the names do appear in the public comments section under the minute. So even though their emails are redacted, we list, we do list their name.
So I, I'm not, like, I'm looking at the July 14th one, and, oh, I see the public comments are all the way at the top.
Yes, because it would be, we would have too many pages prior to the agenda to put them all in one place. We can, the board can email me their thoughts on the matter, and we'll possibly have something in place next week or some kind of hybrid where we still take comments. But I do think we need to change the cutoff to probably noon the day of, as of tonight. I think 5:00 PM is way too, way too late in the day for our administrators to efficiently handle anything.
I'm also a little concerned that, given that our agenda sometimes is posted until fairly, you know, on the wire there, that it doesn't give people a lot of time to review anything and to make a comment. So I don't know if it's possible for, for a draft agenda or something to be posted, you know, Friday night, or, you know, something to give them some time to, to actually digest and then comment.
Yeah, we used to do that more.
Well, don't forget that we are having a work session. And that work session is for us to receive public comment. We are not voting on anything.
I think a lot of people really appreciate, you know, the format of these meetings now being accessible to them without, I mean, it's, I understand the argument for if you have something to say, come down. But, you know, that's just not possible for a lot of people. This is more inclusive. So whatever we can do to enhance the process, I think we should, we should tackle.
Yeah, I mean, we've got 21 people watching right now. I mean, that would have been a near record prior to COVID. And that's been like one of the least attended of these that we've had, so.
Well, we can certainly look at the procedures. This is the first time I'm hearing of any of this. So, yeah, we'll, we'll decide the next couple of days as a board, like, what procedure we want to follow. And, yeah.
Email.
Yeah. Yep. All right. Anything else?
Yeah, before we close, I just wanted to mention that we, at 5 o'clock on the 14th on Monday, we have an education committee meeting. That's already published and filed out, right?
Yes.
And all the motions, any final public comment? Then I'll motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Will we just stay in here, Annie?
Yeah. Sarah, would you stop the YouTube?
Yeah, sorry.